Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming to the council meeting. We'll start out with a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call.
Well, thank you for today. I thank you for these men and women that are here. And, Lord, I pray that you give them guidance and wisdom as they lead our village. And, Lord, I do pray for our village, that you would move in a mighty way. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Steve, very much. Roll call?
Jones?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Barth?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
In your package, you have the March 4 regular council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? If there are none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Roll call?
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Abstain.
Do you have the approved bills list in your packet?
I have a question. Bruce, can you answer? What's a $265 fire handle from NAPA?
It's got me. I'd have to have a little bit more in the fire handle.
That's what it says.
Yeah, pretty curious about that.
What's that other thing on the below? That Q-50 premix also on there. You know what that is? Did you know what Q-50 premix is?
Some kind of fuel.
Q.
Q-50 premix.
Oh, you, that is a premixed fuel that we're putting in all our gasoline motors. It's pretty handy to keep them from gumming up.
Because I think it's 265, a little bit of both, that fire handle and whatever other stuff. I don't know what a fire handle is.
Yeah, I don't know what a fire handle is either, Ron. I'm sorry.
Those are, that was the only thing I had a question on. And nobody else has anything. Pay the bills.
Roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Abstain.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Could you check into that, Bruce? Let me know sometime.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Mark Young and Bob Garza from Two Bandits, who are here on Hoptoberfest. Mark was telling me some plans that they had, and I said, "You just need to come and share with all of council, because you all need to know what's going on." Did he get it?
Thank you, Diane. I appreciate that. Would you like to go to the floor?
Yeah.
This guy's throwing off. He's been holding it to a year somewhere, so I was like, "Where's the buddy?"
Yeah, and you might want to turn the mic so that it's going the right direction, if you would. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. Bob and I are always very, very grateful for the time that we have with you guys. I know that it's a busy night, so we won't take much of your time. We had a nice conversation with Diane about a week ago, I suppose, week and a half ago. The time flies. And we are already preparing and planning for our second annual Hoptoberfest. The first one, as you may or may not know, we had last October, and it was very, very successful for us. And we brought in a lot of new people to the great village of Hicksville that had never been here before, so I was pretty pleased about that. Don't have official numbers, but we're basing it close to 700 people that we served last Hoptoberfest from noon to about 11 o'clock at night. So I certainly call that a win for the entire community. People were stopping in at the gas stations and the convenience stores before or after, so I think, and they were discovering other businesses around the area as well. This year, we're working to expand and make it bigger and better. Last year, we had part of the street closed off, and we're going to change tact just a little bit this year. We are not going to close the street off. What we're going to do is we're going to utilize our wonderful sidewalk space so that the street can remain free and clear throughout the entire day. We're looking at putting a long tent in front of our brewery from the one side to the other. It'll have walls. Obviously, it has a single entrance, and a couple reasons. Therefore, it doesn't matter what the weather will bring, whether it's cold and rainy and windy, or it's warm and beautiful and sunny, we won't have to worry about what the weather's going to do for us. Last year, we had another brewery and a winery here celebrating with us. This year, we have six other breweries committed and a winery to coming and showcasing their craft, as well as our own. And they will be under tent, and we will have volunteers pouring their beers. Maybe a little known fact, the actual breweries are not allowed to pour by state legislation. They cannot pour their own beers. And when I say "pour their own beers," I'm referring to pouring on the tap. They actually have to have volunteers, and so we're working on that as well. I had a very fruitful conversation with Rodney Isaacson, which is our liquor compliance officer, to make sure that, you know, we follow all the rules and everything is as it should be. We're still going to have the 0.8K. For those of you who may not know what that was, that was an astounding success for us. We had 74 runners our first year, and it's roughly, it's two blocks. And you stop halfway for a donut and a strip of bacon, and when you finish, you get a pint of beer. And, of course, the proceeds do go to a couple of very worthy local charities that are near and dear to both Bob and myself. So we're shooting for 100 participants this year, and I'm very confident that we'll get that plus some. So again, we're very, very excited about it. So we'll have a total of seven breweries in the tent showcasing their beers, seven, including us, as well as the winery. I think it's going to be a wonderful event. I'm very, very excited about it. We're going to have a local band performing in the tent from approximately 3 to 6, and then at 7 o'clock, we'll have another local band that will kick in inside the brewery and play till 11:00. So it should be a wonderful festive atmosphere, and I think it's headed in the right direction. I think Bob believes that, too. And we're looking to shoot for 1,400 people to come and visit us this year for Hoptoberfest. So again, I think it's a very positive thing for the community. Obviously, it's positive for us. So we're very, very excited about that. We wanted to, you know, come forward with what we're thinking, what we're planning, and, you know, entertain any questions, any concerns that you have. I think everyone here in the council knows Bob and myself very well by now, and you know that we're very sincere, and we're very much a part of this community. We want to continue to be a part of this community and be a positive force for good in this community. Also, one other thing before I entertain any questions, Diane also asked me to bring up the thought process of the CED, which is the Community Entertainment District. We had talked about this a little bit back late last summer. Eric, I think you might remember a little bit about it. For those of you who may not know, it's called House Bill 47. And essentially, what that does is it allows communities to have an open container law in a designated area from point A to point B, wherever that may be. It also gives the said community the freedom to state when and how long that open container can exist, whether it's for a weekend, for a day, for six months, for the total year. Toledo now has two entertainment districts. Napoleon has one, and I have it from very good sources that Defiance is working on having one by late this summer. I believe that there's a lot of benefit to this. I believe, like anything in life, it's moderation and it's responsibility. I don't think it's going to be an intergalactic kegger, like some people may be concerned that it could be. The communities that are doing, I've been doing some studying and some research, and in every case, it has only increased the revenue and the local businesses in the area where they have found these entertainment districts. Bob and I have the proposal of calling it, if and when this should ever come to fruition, we'd like to call it Ola, which is Spanish for hello. And it basically, it stands for the Hicksville outside Libation area. And again, what, in my opinion, what the wonderful thing is, is that the village, the city, the community makes the decision of where it's at, how long it's for. The state allows it up to them. Of course, you know, the rules and laws of open containers elsewhere would still apply. If you leave those areas, then you're subjected to those rules and those laws, rightfully so. As, for instance, if you were to purchase a beer at The Eagles, let's just say that The Eagles was part of the entertainment district, that drink must be consumed before you enter any other business, including Two Bandits Brewing Company. If you were to purchase a beer at Two Bandits and go for a walk, you couldn't go into H&amp;W Hardware, or, excuse me, H&amp;W until literally that drink was consumed. So, I mean, there are rules, there are stipulations put in place to make sure that things stay moderate and healthy. That's all I really have tonight, other than the fact that the new brew house, I'm very, very proud to say, is coming online. Bob has been working very hard with the contractors. The glycol system, which will be actually chilling our fermentation tanks, is almost complete. Is that right, Bob?
Yeah, it'll be complete tomorrow.
So that means wet firing by the end of the week, which means by the end of the month, we'll actually have production started in the new brew house. Canning will follow by August. We just picked up our 10th distributor two Saturdays ago, and so we're very, very, very pleased about that as well. We still feel that we'll have a minimum of 30 distributors by June. So we're well on our way to the dream of being throughout the state in five years. So that's all I really have. Really appreciate everybody's attention. Does anybody?
Question. Did you say the date for Hoptoberfest?
I did not. That obviously is a very pertinent question. October 12th, which is a Saturday, and that's a week later than last year, and that is done purposely, because, you know, again, we want to be a force for good, and we want to work with the community. And the local fire department, obviously, last year worked with us. They had a run earlier that day, and they had their breakfast. And they asked us if we could put it back a week later, because they had some functions going on earlier. And we had no problem with that at all, because it's wonderful that the fire department likes to get in on the action as well. So that's why it's a week later.
Thanks, Mark.
Anything else? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we go on to boards and commissions. You have minutes in your packet from the beautification committee meeting February 25th. It just kind of tells you what the beautification committee is working on around town right now. And on the back, are there financials? Any questions about that? Okay. Going on to council committee reports. We were given minutes from the water sewer refuse committee. Do you have any report that you would like to make? Mike?
We had a quick water sewer meeting. We discussed the, some property we're taking a look at, and then also met with Jones Henry for some studies that we want them to do. At the end of this meeting, I'd like to go over to executive section for a land acquisition, so we're coming to that. So that's about it.
Mike, you might want to also add that second paragraph on your notes, that has been taken care of.
Yes, but he paid that off, so, yeah.
Are there any other activities of council that have anything to report on?
Just real quick, park, well, once we get to the park. But I know the parks are working really hard on this day in the park, and we actually, Val Gary and myself, Matt LeCher, we looked at our numbers that were budgeted for the park. There is no extra money within our budget to do the day in the park, so we're getting some numbers crunched here. We have a meeting Wednesday night to see where we can ask the council's whole of where we would maybe get some money for some, the Port of John's, things of that nature for next, but we want to keep the numbers around before you would present that.
Thank you. We are on to the administrator's report.
The biggest thing is just to get out to the public that next Friday, the 29th, is the last we plan to be out picking up limbs. They've had about two months to get the yards cleaned up. Some people are done, some people I haven't even gotten out yet, but anyway, next Friday's it. Had a little glitch today. The clutch blew out of the chipper, so we hope to have it back up and running later this week. Otherwise, there's a couple days there where employees are out of town. Want to thank Chief Kramer and Chief Denning for sitting in on that workers' comp class last week. That helped me not have to go out of town for another meeting, and work should be all done for required classes. And also want to thank Nelson Hirschberger for letting us use one of his freezers once again. Commodities, we had way too much to fit into our three freezers, so he helped us out with that. So that's it.
Were the commodities all used? Did they come and pick everything up that you had in your freezers?
We only got a couple leftovers in the freezer this time.
Kent, as a reminder to the public, we do have the recycling lot, so if the city, you don't get them out for the city for your limbs and things, you're able to take them to the recycling lot. Are they starting their summer hours here pretty soon, or?
Started back March 1st. I was getting calls from people saying it was closed all winter. I don't know what I was paying Billy for then, but...
You want to refresh this?
It's Mondays and Thursdays, 1 to 6, and Saturdays, 9 to 1.
Thank you, Kent. Anybody have any questions for Kent? Besides Mike? Far. We're all in the solicitor's absence. Cheryl asked me to read the ordinances. We're on the second reading of ordinance 2019-01 by caption only prohibiting, let's see, an ordinance prohibiting the establishment and operation of medical marijuana cultivators, processors, and retail dispensaries within the village limits. And then we will go on to the first reading of ordinance 2019-02, an ordinance approving the annexation of 883 acres of land from Hicksville Township to the Village of Hicksville on petition by Justin Kuhn and declaring an emergency. So you know what that means.
Why is it an emergency?
Because that's the way Troy wrote it.
I think on this one, it's due to the way the ordinances are written. You have so much time to act on things, that's...
I'm going to suspend the rule.
And a second. Go ahead. Go ahead. That might be something you want to look into for later, looking into that ordinance, if you want to amend the...
Ron moved suspend the rules. Blair, a second.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Second and third reading of ordinance 2019-02, an ordinance approving the annexation of 883 acres of land from Hicksville Township to the Village of Hicksville on petition by Justin Kuhn and declaring it an emergency.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
We'll go on to department heads. Police chief, would you want to come to the podium to report everything you know?
Everything? We don't have that long. Woo!
All right. Just one thing that I wanted to address tonight is, a couple weeks ago, at a council meeting, there was some funds approved for the Humane Society of $2,900, I believe it was. And half of that would be paid out first, and then we were going to see how they would do or respond to the calls, whether the other half went back, if we paid out the other half. Well, on Friday, we dealt with a cat that attacked a village resident here, and she needed hospital treatment. And we were tied up with a criminal investigation at the school. We could not leave to respond to the hospital. I requested the humane agent to respond. She did not respond, and turned it, say it was a health department issue, need to deal with it. Yes, it is a health department issue, because it involves a bite or a scratch. The health department is involved. But I had nobody available, and she, I listened to the phone call, and my opinion is that she was putting on the health department to respond or to handle the situation. And I totally disagree with that. She is a humane agent, and we're talking about cats is what they wanted to use that money for, okay? And they would not respond. But I wanted to bring it to the council's attention about that, so you understand.
We don't have to give them the rest.
Use that other money for the day in the park.
Yep.
Well, let's see what happens.
That's one.
How can you say? You just seen it. You just heard it.
You know, I guess...
It was a no-show.
Now, the dog catcher doesn't get involved at all with cats, just dogs.
The dog ward, I actually talked to the dog warden, and his opinion and feeling was the same way as mine.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot, Mr. Snow.
Now, he said if it absolutely came down with the, in the situation we were in, and there was something that needed to be transported or something, he said, yes, he would help, try to help work with us on that. But just to me, when my officers are tied up, including myself, and we have a county humane agent, and we're dealing with a cat issue that doesn't want to respond to a woman being attacked by a cat, I have a big problem with that, because that's what her job is. And then they were in here asking for money to deal with cats.
Yes. And that cat's probably still...
The cat's been taken to the vet. The family took, yeah, the family took it to the vet.
To be euthanized?
Yes. So it's been a family, it was a family pet, you know? So, but it just, like I said, it made me mad, because we just authorized to give them money, and...
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Did it happen within the residents? I was just asking.
Yes.
So the cat attacked somebody in the house?
Yep.
Real?
Yep. And she was tore up pretty good. She had scratches up all over her arm, bitten several places.
Wow.
You know?
Just for hearsay, the groomer gave me Pete Creer's cat once instead of my cat, and I brought it on.
I remember.
And I let it out of the cage, and I'm like, "That's not my cat."
Both of them were shaved completely. The groomer got mixed up.
The cat attacked me.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
Not to make light of the situation.
No, no, no.
If you hadn't said that, I would have...
I'm kind of lost. I mean, if, I don't have a cat, but if my cat attacked me at my house, why would I call you?
Well, it came in because the hospital has a duty priority to report dog bites and cat bites, and she was at the ER being treated. And then we were called, and I couldn't send anybody to the hospital. I ended up breaking free from that investigation to go to the hospital, all right, when I had other things that I needed to be doing to deal with that. And I did let one of the commissioners know about it, so...
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we will go on to, I believe we have Mr. Parker for the fire department?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. And Val Shaw, would you like to give a report?
Well, I don't have much to say. We're just getting ready, cleaning up and getting ready for baseball. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we will go on to the fiscal officers' report.
Okay. First report we have is your fund status, your monthly purchase order report. And I put a notice from the new attorney general that the new yellow book was published. This is so kindly. And to remind you that everyone needs to take the training, Ohio Public Records Act, one time during their four years, and it's online for free. And I put in a copy, I keep a report. Diane started it, and I've kept it up with it, just to let you know what we have in donations each department. None of it's designated yet, except for that newest one for the park, for the memorial park, memorial walk. You have any questions about that?
I have a question, Cheryl.
Okay.
On the purchase order listing.
Uh-huh.
What do we pay community action commission for?
One minute. Haven't paid it yet. Purchase orders aren't paid.
What was it for?
Where do you say that?
The very last page.
Oh.
At the bottom.
That is...
The GIS and asset management through our cap.
Started last year, so ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
And I put in the, all the sessions that Kent and I got our choice of going to. We went to one every section, and so did I. We didn't get to go to all of them, of course. So we picked the best ones we thought. And if you have any questions about that, I have all the information here. And then tonight, I put, let's see, the Department of Commerce, renewal of the liquor permits have to be in by June 1st. And so on the back are the list of all the Hicksville permits that are out there right now, that I'll need to renew by June 1st. And then I also put in on my desk tonight, this is from Ohio Watchdog, about the new auditor, Keith Faber. Just to let you know, it is important that you do not get caught discussing government business on social media, because of their example was in Cincinnati, and it cost the taxpayers more than $100,000 to settle from them doing that and get caught. So just don't do that. That's all I've got.
Does anybody have any questions for Cheryl regarding any of that stuff? You have a letter that was sent out to, hopefully, all of the downtown property owners about a revitalization of CDVG, Down a revitalization, a CDVG downtown program that would allow them to have matching funds up to $160,000 total, or I guess per business owner share, $80,000, half of that, 50%, 50% match, to make repairs and things to downtown buildings. Typical improvements that are funded are electrical, plumbing, HVAC, HVAC improvements, exterior painting, tuck pointing, awnings, signings, signage. Roof and accessibility improvements are also allowed. Windows, meeting the preservation guidelines, replace wood with wood, et cetera, are allowed. This is for retail commercial spaces, not residential spaces that may be upstairs of the buildings. And I am hoping that we have some downtown, some interest from downtown property owners because I've been told that certain people want to fix up their buildings. It's just too costly. So this would be a good start for someone. I know that using architects and doing downtown improvements can be very costly, but I would think that if someone truly wanted to fix up their building, this would be a good place to start. So that meeting is going to be March 20th at 6:00 PM in the council room. And Paulat Mills from Pogomar Design Group will be in attendance to answer questions. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, there's a census coming up in 2020. And I've already talked to Kent and Cheryl and Mike Bailey of its importance because, you know, that has a lot of effect on, on grants, when they figure our income in our community and that kind of stuff. And then there's perhaps some immigrants that won't reply because they have a fear of maybe reporting to the census bureau of getting them in some trouble or something. But the census is for everybody to take. And I just want to stress, even some cities are doing practice runs. They're, like in Detroit, this article says that they're, they're going to do dry runs so that people, you know, get used to the census idea and this and that. So I just think it's really important, and it may seem, it's not early. And they're having trouble getting census workers. That's another concern that they have, that they're not going to find enough people to go door to door to collect the census information. This article says that you're going to be able to go online and do it, but that suggests that, it says for the first time, Americans will have the opportunity of completing the census online in 2020 instead of filling out a paper questionnaire. But many poorer householders, many poorer households already among the most difficult to count, lack internet access. So, you know, I'm just going to keep bringing this up. The census is really important to us. And that's all I have. So is there anyone present that wants to address council without anything? All right. Well, I'm told that somebody wants to go into an executive session, so.
I would like to go into an executive session for possible land purchase. Second.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
If you'd like to stick around until they come back into regular session, you can wait in my office. I assume this is a.